Good afternoon, everyone. It is now 12:03 PM, so we're going to go get started. Again, good afternoon. I'm Councilman John Bullock, representing the 9th District and Chair of the Education, Youth, and Older Adults Committee. We have a very lively agenda ahead today, so we're going to go ahead and get started. Today, our committee is going to be hearing 250027R, informational hearing, home repair assistance for older adults. In the chambers right now, we have members of the committee, Mark Parker of the 1st District, we have Zach Blanchard of the 11th District, and also Councilmember Odette Ramos of the 14th District, who is the sponsor of this piece of legislation that we're going to talk about today. Also, do want to note that we are joined by several city agencies, city partners, obviously the Mayor's Office, the Office of Older Adults as well, and representatives from Housing. So let's jump right in. So again, the purpose of this bill is for inviting the Baltimore City Department of Housing and Community Development, the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, Mayor's Office of Older Adult Affairs and Advocacy, and relevant stakeholders to provide an update to the City Council on the status of home repair assistance programs for older adults in Baltimore City. Before going to the sponsor, I do want to make some brief comments. Actually, today, I just left the funeral of one of our residents, longstanding person in our community. And one of the things that came up in the service today was around living in dignity and our older adults aging in place. And it's something that we deal with not only personally, but also in our office. And so I can look out into the audience, and I see actually my constituent services manager, Lynda Lomax, who's also a constituent of Councilmember Ramos, who does significant work on this issue, shepherding some of our seniors through this process, sometimes successfully and sometimes unsuccessfully. I also see one of our residents who's had challenges getting through that program. And so I know you'll hear from others today who've also dealt with that. But again, I'm very thankful and grateful for my colleague, Odette Ramos. So I do want to turn it over to Councilmember Ramos for some comments before we get started.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for giving us this time to discuss this important topic, and thanks to the committee members as well. I want to thank everybody who's here for taking the time today. The purpose of today's session is just to understand where we are in the home repair for older adults programs that we have in the city. And we, the council wants to be partners to make sure that all of our older adults can age in place with dignity. That's the bottom line. And I know since I've become a councilperson, we haven't had an update like this. So we want to just get a sense of what is happening. We understand that there are backlogs, so what are ways that we can be partners to try to help address that? And we are going to hear from some of our older adults today as well. We also know that home repair for older adults primarily is to make sure that our older adults age in place with dignity, but also is a way to make sure, for two other reasons, make sure that the home is in a good place, again, that the elder can age with dignity, but also that, you know, junior will be comfortable wanting to move back into the home when the opportunity might arise, as well as it is a vacancy prevention strategy, which we've talked about in our, in our vacancies prevention work and our vacancies reduction work. Because if the home is in a decent shape and the older adult pest is, the likelihood that the family will come back to build that intergenerational wealth, but also that the home becomes part of the whole block strategy. So, but most importantly for me is to make sure that our older adults are getting the services that they deserve after being part of our communities and while being part of our communities for so long, and for looking out for us. They've looked out for us their entire lives, and we deserve, we should be able to make sure that they are able to live and to age in place with dignity. So I'm looking forward to the hearing, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for allotting the time, and I'm looking very much forward to the discussion. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Ramos. One thing I do want to note, also, we've been joined by Commissioner Kennedy, Department of Housing and Community Development. Appreciate you being here. Really speaks to the importance of this issue. I'd also want to note, you may hear some different languages, as we've talked about seniors, older adults. I know the nomenclature has changed, but one of the things that I would just emphasize to Councilmember Ramos's point is that these are the golden members of our society that we want to make sure that we are uplifting and doing our best to support. That being said, we know we have partners here who do this work. We also have folks who are affected directly. And so we do want to hear first from our members of the community who are here to testify. I know some folks signed up to testify, so I do see, one name ready to go?
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw, I see Cecilia Alexander.
Ms. C.C.
Yes. And as you come forward, just please press the button to the right, and it'll light up red.
All right. Thank you. Okay. All right. And first of all, let me say good afternoon to everyone.
Good afternoon.
As a senior citizen and longtime resident of this great city, I'd like to begin by expressing a deep appreciation for the creation and continued support of essential programs like housing upgrades to benefit seniors or hubs, and living independently, growing healthy together, or light. These are not just programs, they are lifelines. They affirm the value of this city's older population and represent a commitment to helping us age in place with dignity and safety. However, I'd like to share with you some growing concerns. One I know is shared by many in the Chum community. These programs, as promising and necessary as they are, are taking far too long to reach the very people they are created to help. When you're dealing with a vulnerable population, time is just not precious, it's critical. Delays in service delivery can mean seniors remain in unsafe conditions longer, are at greater risk of injury, and become more vulnerable to the very real threat of predatory real estate practices targeting older homeowners. These delays threaten not just individuals' well-being, but also generational wealth and the stability of neighborhoods. Additionally, I would like to raise the issue of income eligibility. In my own experience, I narrowly missed qualifying for assistance by just a few dollars. While I understand the need for guidelines, the thresholds as they stand can unintentionally exclude seniors who still face significant financial hardships. A more flexible, inclusive approach could ensure that more seniors in need are not left behind. I sincerely hope this hearing is a step in the direction of thoughtful reform and efficiency these programs deserve. Because when we talk about bricks and mortar, we're talking about quality of life, dignity, and in many cases, survival. I want to also take this time to address a critical area of concern, and that of intake. When I first applied to hubs, the response time for someone to get back to me was about three months. That person was the only person handling intake. I was referred to the program on 25th Street, St. Ambrose Housing. The person to whom I turned in my personal information to no longer works at St. Ambrose. My information landed on the desk of someone else who no longer works for St. Ambrose. I wonder why I was referred to an organization that clearly cannot help me because their location and their scope is limited and does not include my community. I am strongly suggesting that to help people, you really have to make an effort. I suggest, therefore stipend, you may be able to enlist the help of those senior citizens that are able and willing, and I say able and willing because we know that people are willing but not able. I want to thank you for your time, your leadership, and your commitment to making Baltimore a city that truly cares for its seniors. Again, I say thank you.
No, thank you, Ms. Alexander. I do want to note, we've also been joined by Councilmember Jermaine Jones of the 12th District, but also want to note just the citywide nature of this issue. So whether you're in the 14th District in Chum, or whether you're in the 9th District in Midtown Edmonton, as the next person I'm going to call, Mr. Quentin Whaley, who we've worked with for years. Mr. Whaley, would you like to come forward?
Councilman Bullock, thank you, and thank Ms. Lynda Lomax, because you've been sticking with me all the way for several years. I've been trying to tap into the resources provided by you guys to get a new roof replacement, a new furnace, an upgrade on my electrical system. My parents bought this house in 1950. They passed in 1990 and 2010. I took residency there approximately 10 years ago. Since that time, the ownership of the dwelling is in my name. I met all the requirements that the agencies that give the resources out have asked for, but what I've gotten is passing the buck. I could literally hear sometimes people on the phone say, "Well, I got a nail appointment. I ain't got time." I could hear some people on the phone say, "Well, I got a cold today. I don't have time." And the only reason I heard it, because they said it, and it was on speakerphone. I tried to get in touch with H U B S. Nobody's never there to address it. I've been over there not once, not twice, not three, not four, but maybe six, seven times. Nobody's never in the office. I got in touch with N H S, and they tried to give me a, what should I say, an ultimatum saying, "Well, look, the guys need $150,000 to do your house." I said, "Wait a minute, I'm in this business. I'm a certified building maintenance mechanic. I currently work for two senior buildings." You see my shirt, that's what I do. So my knowledge of this field and hearing this type of suggestion that it costs $150,000, she could buy me a new house for that. So what I did, I called Handyman. Handyman gave me a quote for the same services for $20,000. They got $130,000 taxed on to that. They got back in touch with me. Now, today, I had a contractor to come to the house, and she walked through the house. She said, "Well, your house needs to be condemned." I said, "Why is that?" Well, it's old, it's going to take a lot of money, and the cost of materials, and all this kind of stuff, right? Now, part of my roof caved in, but prior to this happening, I had been on the line with these same public people for over four years. I'd been up on my roof, putting tops on the roof, putting new joists on the roof and so forth like that, but I can't do it by myself. So N H S came out there. They had a tractor trailer full of supplies. They put tops down, they started working on the roof, scraping stuff off the roof and everything like that. And then they say, "You know what? We feeling safe up here." They closed down, put a cheap top up there, which has blown and caused more water to come into my house. So I attempted to get them to come back out, and they said they're not going to do it. But you left me in a worse state than what I was. Now, in the roofing business, what people do, the professionals do, the ones with integrity, what they do, they ascertain the structure first. A flat roof, you work one at a time. You don't have 20 people up on a roof, you know? So where was this $150,000 estimate coming from? And no one wants to take, how should I say, responsibility for the decision. No one wants to take responsibility for coming back out there to make me whole. So I've been playing this routine of dumping water like we back in the 1800s. The side of my house, excuse me, it's a corner house, has been hit by the city trucks, trash trucks dug all into the wall, dug into the columns and so forth like that. And when you go to address it, it takes forever and a day. But when you get a ticket from the city, they want their money now. When I had a car, it was a Saturn, somebody stole my tags. I had a police report done. Now, somebody was getting tickets on the tag, and I'm trying to say, "What officer would turn around and write a ticket here on my vehicle when I got proof that the tags have been stolen? The car's inoperable." So it's like a half a dozen tickets on it. How come it didn't register? Hold up, these tags don't belong on this vehicle. So they towed my car, auctioned it off, and sent me a bill for $6,000. I can't tell you what I told them, you know? I can't tell you what I told them, because it'd be really nasty. So now, you're going to tell me I need to pay you $6,000 for you stealing my vehicle on a false pretense?
Mr. Whaley?
So now, back to this situation of trying to get some help. My councilman and my councilman manager have been at several meetings trying to open the door to make this happen, but there's no results. So I'm left, again, in a worse state than I was in because some contractors came out there, got all the stuff off the roof, and decided that it was unsafe. Oh, excuse me, and decided that it was unsafe.
Mr. Whaley?
So I really appreciate you guys giving me, providing a forum and caring about seniors. I'll be 72 this year. I'm still working, and the reason why I'm still working, because I need to get there. I got grandkids and great-grandkids, and I want them to see the best of me, not the worst of me. I want to be able to say, "Hey, hey, we going to the park. Hey, let's go downtown and see how city government works. Let's learn about civic awareness and responsibility." Because we live in a community now where some of the contractors, we have what you call the Frederick Douglass Program, and we have two and a half stories of dirt at the end of my block.
Mr. Whaley, I really appreciate you coming and everything you said, because we've been working together on this for years, and I wanted folks to hear your story, and it was deeply personal, it took a lot for you to share that. But also, I want folks to understand the complexities of some of the folks, some of the things that our folks are dealing with within our communities. And I know we have a lot of folks on the schedule, so I'm going to ask you to close out, but I really do thank you. And for those of you who are not familiar with this kind of process, Mr. Whaley's been sharing pictures with us and some of the conditions that he's had to deal with. And so again, we want to make sure that your voice and the voice of others were heard. So again, thank you for coming out today.
And thank you for having me.
Absolutely.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Give yourself a hand of applause for opening this forum up. Thank you.
Well, we got work to do. And is there, and thank you again, is there anyone else here who would not sign or testify who would like to have words before we go to our agencies? Okay. All right, so again, thank you, Commissioner Kennedy, for being with us today. And I appreciate Ms. Andoria Harmon being with us as well. I'll leave it up to you who wants to go. You ready to go? All right, please.
Uh, yeah, I think the Commissioner has a longer presentation, so why don't we have Ms. Andoria go first, just to talk a little bit about what your office is doing on this issue, and then we can pass it along to the Commissioner. The button with the little person on it.
The red button, I'm sorry. It's the red button. I apologize. I am an older adult, okay? We have been working with Housing, and we've had some discussions, and we have, me and the Commissioner, agreed on some things, and we're going to work together to help clear up any misinformation or misunderstanding of the program on the public side of things. I'm quite sure as we move along in this process that we will also, anything else that we discovered in this hearing, that I am open and I have pledged, you know, continuous open communication with Housing to ensure that our older adults who I encounter are given information to help them understand the program. And I will bring back any feedback that I get when I'm out doing my outreach. We discussed, me and the Commissioner discussed, because you know I do the luncheon learns, and I'm moving them around, especially when I do the church ones, I'm bringing in homeowners mostly, to do a whole series that is just devoted to the programs, the hubs program, so that older adults can understand the process. I think in the presentation, you'll see where they talk about how we're going to work together to do an instructional, informational document that I will make sure that we always go out with, and that anybody that I come in contact with that's going to do outreach also from the Mayor's Office has. So that's one of the things that we have discussed. So I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Kennedy.
And really quickly, before you do that, I just want to, again, thank you for your work. I also want to note that a member of the committee, Vice President Shangri Milton, is not here today. She would be here, but she's doing her older adult seminar. So again, we recognize these issues, we appreciate us working together, so thank you for that effort. Commissioner, please.
Do you want me to hear it?
Yeah, please, yeah, introduce your team, do your thing.
Make it all work here. Excellent, thank you. All right, good afternoon. It is afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. Alice Kennedy, Housing Commissioner, Baltimore City, Department of Housing and Community Development. Really excited to be here today to talk about, you know, an informational hearing on home repair assistance for older adults. This is something that I've been working on in the realm of city government for years now, going back to when I was in the planning department and working on coordination with so many of our partners here around the table. I just want to put out that one of the things that I know that is at the core of the hubs partnership, the housing upgrades to benefit seniors partnership, is that there is a common core belief in all of the hearts and minds of the people that work on this work, that we need to do the best that we possibly can to serve our older adults in Baltimore City. The teams of the hubs leadership team from Civic Works, Green and Healthy Homes Initiative, the longstanding work that Ruth Ann Norton has been doing over the decades now, starting out with lead hazard reduction, but looking at how that impacts our seniors that have children in the home, to the coordinated approach on weatherization and kind of whole-house outcomes, to rebuilding Together Baltimore, and the work that Bonnie's done over the years, Civic Works, Lauren, and the entire team, and then all of the other hubs partners that make up the network, really do believe that, you know, this work is important, there's a sense of urgency associated with it, and it is needed in the city. That being said, I think all of us would state that at times, at different times, varying times, there are some challenges, there are some barriers. Is it perfect? No. Has there always been progress in, you know, the work? Yes. Do we have a forum and ways to have those conversations? Absolutely. Do we know what some of the barriers are, some of the fixes, some of, you know, the wins, the challenges, the wins, the successes, and how to celebrate those? You know, what can we improve upon? We absolutely know that there are things there too that need to be done to better, you know, coordinate. And also, I think a real big one, and this is what I talked about with Director Harmon and my team, and I know we've talked about it with the hubs leadership partner team, is also just communication, how the program is clearly communicated in terms of what tracks you're on and who does what work where and when, as well as, you know, the proactive communication pieces on case updates and things like that. So with all of that being said, really, like I said, excited to be here. This is extremely important. I want to thank Ms. C.C. and Mr. Whaley. Is he still here? He had to leave? Okay, Lynda will let him know that I thank him as well for their testimony and understanding the challenges that they've faced. So we're going to do a quick overview here. One of the first things is that we wanted to describe, I think, one of those communication components in the world is this communication around the LIGHT program, right? And this goes back, I think, years. Some of us in this room were around when LIGHT was, LIGHT was created. If anybody raises their hand, I can give a prize if you know what the acronym is for, but Ruth Ann cannot get the prize. Oh, we got our staff knows. Okay, Bonnie, you know, you know. So that is it. Leading Innovation for a Green and Healthy Tomorrow. But that is not a program. And it is one of those things, actually, which was a back and forth on how to handle that name change years ago with the partners as well, because people became so, it became synonymous with this work that we kept that name. So it is a misnomer for what is the Division of Homeownership and Housing Preservation's Intake and Assessment Unit. It's the comprehensive intake and outreach within the DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development's Homeownership and Housing Preservation Division, and it's responsible for collecting documentation and making referrals to the many different possible programs that may align with the person's needs. So we've provided an overview of the org chart for homeownership and housing preservation, and kind of seeing how that falls in and where it falls. And we now have the new kind of our social services, integrated client services division, which oversees the Office of the Embusmen, as well as the LIGHT Intake and Assessment Unit, that all report up to Director Manago, who I know that some of you have met and worked with on some of our embusmen work. So a reminder in terms of what LIGHT does, it assists in that pre-application and application completion and document collection. Sometimes that means doing home visits, initial assessments are done over the phone to help identify needs, and we try to do that triage for urgent issues for priority emergency cases where there is immediate threat to health, life, and safety within the home. They also do screenings for some of those wraparound services that we talk about in terms of homeowner's tax credit, homeowner's tax credit, the homestead tax credit, employee assistance, healthcare benefits, estate planning, and other resources. What LIGHT does not do is, LIGHT does not set or commit any capital funding to a case. They don't schedule home inspections, they don't set the program eligibility requirements, and it operates on a first-come, first-served basis unless, like I mentioned, there's an immediate threat to health, life, and safety in that screening process. And how many time it can take to complete that screening process, there are components to that in terms of how quickly some of their responses, how fast we get the necessary documentation, and if we have to correct any errors on that as well. One of the other key components that we wanted to talk about is that, you know, we created a while ago to try to bifurcate kind of the a while ago to try to bifurcate kind of the list and to give people better understanding, we created a pre-application. So that pre-application is completed saying that it's shorter, it puts in a smaller amount of information saying that you're interested in services, and then as we move things forward, you go into that intake assessment and then document collection, and then that application is certified, and then that would, application would move on to any of the programs that the customer qualified for. The key area and key section is the Office of Rehabilitation Services that provides the resources for home repair within our division. It's an office within the division. It's dedicated to making those necessary repairs and also trying to work to address those urgent issues, health and safety violations and code violations. In terms of who is eligible for those home repairs, and the Office of Rehabilitation Services serves everyone, not just our older adult population, they serve everyone. Who is eligible? It's the low and moderate homeowners, as identified by HUD's annual income guidelines, and it has to be a primary residence. And like we said before, the Office of Rehabilitation Services is not the LIGHT program. LIGHT is outreach, do this, and then they refer over to rehab, weatherization, et cetera. We wanted to share some of the common reasons for application denial. This is one thing that comes up significantly. We do get persons that apply where the property is not their primary residence. Sometimes it's used for financial or business purposes, the applicant is over income. This is something that Ms. CC and I have talked about before, and we firmly understand that, you know, an 80% area meeting income, if you're at 80.5%, does not mean that you are rolling in cash and able to make the repairs that you need to make on your home. And I think that that is one of the things, a number of the different funding sources that the city uses, as well as some of our partners, have different AMI caps on them. And so trying to work to get additional funding that can go above the 80% is definitely something that is extremely important as we talk about how to try to reach all older adults across the city and not have that income cap play out. We also are not able to assist in active bankruptcy cases and other financial issues. It also impacts us on the estate planning. That's a big one when they're not, you know, you might still be living in a property that's in, you might be an older adult and you're still living in a property that is in your parents' name, and that poses that issue. So then we have to refer to our partners to help with estate planning and trying to get that tangled title resolved. So in terms of the process, you know, we get that referral from LIGHT, it goes through the underwriting, then into scope and estimating, then bidding and contracting, and then construction and payment. I, you know, want to talk about construction and payment too. This process is specific that I just outlined, so specific to internal DHCD process, not necessarily what our outside partners have. I do want to just talk about invoicing and payment as it relates to the outside partners. We know there have been some previous challenges over the years with invoicing on both sides of the HUBS DHCD partnership. You know, we've refined that process. This is one of those things where we're constantly looking for ways to improve. And right now with a handful of complex cases invoicing for HUBS in terms of our partners on the outside is up to date, and we did have some recent delays that did date back to fiscal year '24. But the administration between DHCD and the HUBS administration do have monthly meetings as well as sometimes, depending upon how that's needed, they do meet even more frequently to help work through those issues. So in terms of housing upgrades to benefit seniors, in terms of HUBS administration, this kind of goes to what I was just talking about before. HUBS as housing upgrades to benefit seniors is an award-winning collaborative effort between our nonprofit partners and, you know, the four home repair programs and the community-based organizations, the partners, and even though it's, like I said, it is award-winning and we always have room for improvement and coordination and collaboration to be able to efficiently service our older adults in Baltimore. So it provides that coordinated repair work to our teams. The HUBS leadership team is comprised of Civic Works, GHHI, Green and Healthy Homes Initiative, Neighborhood Housing Services of Baltimore, Rebuilding Together Baltimore. And we as DHCD sit on that leadership team, but we do not shape HUBS policies or procedures as it relates to the HUBS network and the HUBS leadership team and the partner agencies and nonprofit partners there. But we do offer guidance and we do offer input on strategies, guidance, and how to coordinate on those home repair programs between the city programs and the HUBS leadership programs. So, you know, one quick thing I want to highlight here too is that the program was actually originally conceived and developed to assist in existing home repair programs, including DHCDs, but has evolved over time, and it's been a great evolving component. Everybody's been eager to see the program evolve by, you know, strategically pursuing additional funding sources on the partners' team and having their resources to deploy, whether or not it be through grant or loan funds, depending upon, like I said, those different eligibility. And I think that's one of the hardest things, because everybody has different funding streams and all the funding streams come with it, different eligibility requirements. So the HUBS sites that I wanted to mention is the case managers. These are across Banner, Keswick, Meals on Wheels, Sinai, and St. Ambrose. The other piece that I wanted to mention as well is that HUBS, in terms of the partners do receive operating and have received operating support from the Stillman Foundation for that service, and Civic Works carries out like the main administrative components, and they are who the city has the key kind of daily, weekly coordination with to help then disseminate out through the HUBS partners. So, you know, in terms of our partnership with HUBS, we provide access to capital funding through direct payments to contractors for work that has been completed. The HUBS administration requests the funding and submits that invoice, and then we pay that invoice, you know, and get that for processing. Over the years, we've actually found a new funding source to support older adult home repair. That's the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And we've, over the last three years, we've been able to utilize over 2.5 million with the HUBS partners of Affordable Housing Trust Fund dollars. I will say once again, that comes with a caveat because of the strict AMI requirements on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So we were talking about someone like Ms. CC that might be over that 80%, but here we have a larger amount of capital dollars and the AMI is at 50% and below, with 50% of the funding needing to be at 30% and below. So we really prioritize that 30% and below population. There are plenty, and the need is great. So I'm not trying to like say that the need isn't there. The need is there. And I will also say that my experience from my vantage point in working with this program and in this space for the years that I have, a lot of times that 30% and below AMI population, not only is the need great, but the cases can be more complex. And with that complexity comes the need for additional funds or additional case management and coordination and other resources that are needed to help that older adults not just survive, you know, but to thrive, you know, cliche, but that's where we are, to thrive in their environment. So I do want to just highlight that, like we have found a funding source, we've been deploying that funding source, utilizing it on both cases within the HUBS partnership world as well as with cases within DHCD. And I will state that we are, you know, it's award-winning, but, you know, I was at a conference last year with our Civic Works representative, our, you know, partner from the Stillman Foundation and Deputy Commissioner Hart, and we were in a room with representatives from cities around the country, and we were considered a leader in terms of the thought process that went into creating the program, the thought process in terms of how we handle some of the intake, wraparound services. And since that time, a year ago, that was last June, so it has been a full year, we've actually hosted a number of those cities in Baltimore, whether or not physically here or through virtual meetings to help guide them on certain things that they brought up and wanted to move forward. So there were some resolution questions, I don't want to forget about those, and wanted to just go through, we were able to provide, this is specific in terms of our, you know, home repair projects at DHCD, the total number of cases and like if and where there were older adults. We also have a little bit of a different piece at DHCD than the HUBS partnerships in terms of the age. So we have a 55-year and older, and then we also have a 62-year and older breakdown. So that also is one of those things in terms of communication and how we communicate that and the differences of the program. The question number two was around funding sources that were allocated from ARPA and others. So ARPA, the sub-grants were provided directly to HUBS collaborative members. We've put the amount of funding that was provided to those collaborative members. We had the leadership team, which all received the $412,500, and then the sites that also had the case manager on this next page at that $300,000. So we have spent over almost, you know, 4.8 million of the ARPA funding that was dedicated to the 55 and plus cap as well, and we have over 57 HUBS partner cases where that money has been spent. In terms of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, since 2021, over $8 million has been spent from the trust fund for seniors 55 and older at 50% AMI and below, and about $4 million of that has been spent on about 248 HUBS partner cases. In terms of our CIP budget for DHCD, we have had committed the, there is a line item that is housing upgrades to benefit seniors, and that does help to provide some of those supplemental grant dollars to low-income older adults. We've also been able to utilize some of those funds when we do have an emerging situation and an emergent situation of life, health, and safety, and the client has been right over the 80% AMI, we've been able to use these funds to assist in those places as well. We also have in our budget the Critical Repair Program. That is actually used across all of our programs, so that is not HUBS-specific, but we do tap into that when needed to try to help make projects happen and to fill gaps. And there have been times when the HUB partners have said, hey, we have a gap on this project, can you help out? And we try to figure out how to make that work and find the additional funding to do so. You know, we have, also, I want to back up, the CDBG funding also comes in on our Office of Rehabilitation Services, and that is for everybody, not age-restricted. So, you know, we do have funding in fiscal year '25 that is exclusive to operating adults there. On the DHCD budget side, all of our operating dollars for the Office of Rehabilitation Services is CDBG-funded. So our operations is funded through CDBG, and that also includes some of the LIGHT team members as well as the rehab techs and the underwriters and other persons. So we're moving on to, my clicker, fun times, understanding the path forward to kind of move adults off the waitlist. You know, there are different things that need to happen in order to do that. You know, we've been looking at what our existing cases are, the emergency services to address some of those initial health and safety clients that have specific needs. There are 101 clients that have been referred to Office of Rehabilitation Services from that waitlist who were qualified through LIGHT to do that. And, you know, wait time does vary depending upon severity of the repairs needed, the complexity of the case, and the order of the referral, you know, referral process. In terms of question four, it was a timeline for home repair requests. This was reviewed with the team in terms of looking at this over a period of time, which I forget what the period of time we pulled.
This is FY '22.
Yeah, this is FY '22, to today, which we have. So it does show time in the kind of pre-application, how long they're there, when they're referred, initial contact, order to proceed, et cetera. And we do understand and see that there's a significant number of months, especially when we look at aging on some of those open cases, the timeframe from pre-app to invoice, that is, you know, shows, because that's basically the entire workflow. And we do understand that this is not a process that happens overnight for some people, some people it does, some it's longer, and there are components of this process that we at the city don't control. So some of that is around contractor choice and signing of contractor agreeing to the scope, like that is one thing. We cannot just walk into an older adult's home and we see what we see and know what we would prioritize, but sometimes it takes a while to effectively work with our older adults to try to tackle the things that they want to do and kind of what is also needed for their health and safety, which is one reason why the case managers, the social service coordinators and all of that is so important in terms of trying to have those conversations and help move people to the next stage as we possibly can. Existing obstacles that we talked about, we've talked about some of those before. One key one that we've talked about is that clear communication with homeowners, and that is a common challenge. You know, the process is complex, it is nonlinear. We, you know, do use touchpoints to try to explain next steps. We have improvements that are being made on our side at the division in terms of just customer service and coordination and communication from a DHCD standpoint. Deputy Hart has reorganized our chart, our org chart and kind of those services for the alignment of duties. We hired that director, a new director of administration that leads a dedicated customer service team to also kind of project manage the phone system upgrades with BSIT for better tracking and call recording, et cetera. And we've also in the process of recruiting three additional office support specialists to help just with kind of call volume and that customer service piece. We also have new social service coordinator supervisor as well as an additional recruitment of four social service coordinators which help with that LIGHT intake and assessment processing as well as home visits when needed and complicated cases. We also had a DHCD this week, and Monday and Tuesday was all agency, whole agency, all the agency, customer service training across all of the divisions and programs within DHCD. So that is an overarching across the entire agency, and then specific to HUBS and homeownership and housing preservation, customer service training modules assigned in Workday and added into performance plans, et cetera, to have an increase on those customer service side. You know, and we definitely are also collaborating with the I-team, with Director Chief Innovation Officer Smith and his team on that method of consistent updates of the waitlist and looking for technology solutions for that as well. Like I said, we're partnering with Director Harmon and her team on those communication components to the outside world, and we do often have some of these obstacles, like I mentioned before, the homeowner contractor selection, reverse mortgages and those predatory lenders come in, the bankruptcy, and et cetera. In terms of closing remarks, I just want to highlight a couple of other things that we've been working on and looking to address. So one, several months ago now, it's been a while, timeframe changes, but we met last summer and then another meeting in the fall, early winter, early winter, with HUBS leadership team, talking specifically about permitting and, you know, different things that were needed there. There was at one point some confusion around, you know, a site drawing and what was needed and kind of clarifying how we can help at the agency with some of those things, with some of our contractors. We've also connected the HUBS leadership and partners with, they all have Shanika Lewis, our permit liaison, contact information. our permit liaison, contact information. We've also internally been training and the permits team has been training our inspectors on the HUBS cases and like how their work could impact other things. And that was a big conversation that we had among the leadership team. We also, for right now, have instructed the HUBS partners on how to self-identify their projects in Acela. In the list, I think at the hearing the other night, you heard about a top 10 list for Acela changes. I will say that is not in the top 10 list because we have some other things that are more pressing just in terms of like faster moving. But we are putting in like checkbox, I don't know if the design, I can't say if it's a checkbox, I can't say if it's a dropdown menu, but we are putting in one that is going to be specific, not just to HUBS, but to our other partners on the development side to say like, are you receiving city funds or state funds for this project? So we can also identify those. So we've made those. We've worked through some of our data issues, you know, and are continuing to work through some of our data issues on the LIGHT intake and assessment side. And that is one of the areas that we're partnering with the I-Team on in terms of that data management project and everybody's workflow and that they're doing the actual work in the system. And since some of those changes have been made, we've seen improvement from the social service coordinators. They all looked up when I turned over, they knew. They just knew. They've been, you know, doing a better job and ensuring that their note taking, their workflow, everything is being done in the system, not outside of the system and then trying to scramble and go back and enter. So we've been working on updating that as well. You know, we're doing some analyzing of that waitlist versus some of the informal routes that we're taking for analysis, cross-referencing our waitlist with the HUBS waitlist as well, and trying to clean up that waitlist to make sure we really know how many people are really waiting. And also trying to standardize some names of things so that, you know, people can be consistently searched and connected with where they're going. So those are some of the items that I just wanted to highlight. The other thing is that, you know, we have, there are some smaller jobs that are $2,500 or less. And, you know, we complete those larger kind of comprehensive and have a higher dollar amount, and then sometimes it changes with our partners. So that finishes out my presentation for today. Once again, you know, we are here at DHCD to assist. We've been making improvements. We have more improvements to go. We've been stating exactly what those are. But, you know, a big thing that Deputy Hart did was the rearrangement of staff in the org chart to have very clear kind of understanding of that client services component, which is a huge change and different way to think about that. We also have Assistant Commissioner, we have Brooke Paluzzi with us, which has been a great addition to the team because she is a HUBS Partner alum. And knows, you know, we were talking earlier about, you know, times when I was in the office, when I was a deputy commissioner with Brooke and the rest of the team sorting through waitlists and how to coordinate and using like a shared Google spreadsheet. And we've come a long way, like we now have some database functionality, we have better coordination. But like I said, is it perfect? No. Do we want to improve? Absolutely. Are we here to help our older adults across the city? 100%. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kennedy. Really appreciate your testimony and also walking us through some of the ups and some of the details. Also know that we have several HUBS partners who are with us today. Did want to say, ask if there are any questions for the Commissioner or want to go straight to our HUBS? Okay, any particular, in particular order of our HUBS partners?
I think Lauren is going first, yeah?
All right. Thank you so much for being here.
Just hit the button on the right. There you go.
I might, I might need it. No. So Commissioner Kennedy did a great job of talking about the HUBS program, so I'm going to skip around a little bit with my part of talking. I wanted to just talk about, and I am Lauren Avarela with Civic Works, have been a part of the HUBS program since its inception 10 years ago. And really, we became a program to address the need of helping people with applications. So our original starting point was that there was money sitting at the city that could not be accessed because the applications were burdensome. And it was very hard to get an application together. And so funds were being unspent. So that, that is where HUBS came around 10 years ago. We work under what is called a no wrong door model. That is to ensure residents can have access to a single streamlined intake process. Again, being and doing this work for the past 15 years, I remember when we used to have older adults call us and we'd have to give them like a list of phone numbers. And it was very, again, cumbersome to have to call everyone on that list, not know who you were calling. I, I would go into people's houses and literally they would have lists of, well, I'm going to call this person today, this person today, this person today, to get one, one thing done. And so the goal of this was to make it very streamlined, have one intake person so that older adults could get the services. By calling the central intake line, they are connected to one of our six case managers who work based on zip code. They will then be provided personalized handle and support, so they do get home visits, they get application assistance, and they do get the help in collecting those documentations to get the home repair started. HUBS is a collaborative program. It was up on the screen earlier, but I would like to just say it includes Banner Neighborhoods, HI, Civic Works, Green and Healthy Homes Initiative, Keswick Multi-Care Center, Life Bridge Health, Meals on Wheels of Central Maryland, Neighborhood Housing Services of Baltimore, Rebuilding Together Baltimore, and St. Amber's Housing Aid Center. We work very closely in partnership with the city's DHCD office, as you heard, and the Office of Rehabilitation Services. Since our launch, HUBS has helped over 3,500 older adults remain in their homes. The common repairs that we do are roofing, HVAC, plumbing, electrical work, and accessibility modifications. We are, we are primarily and only doing health and safety modifications because we do believe that's the important aspect to be able to keep people in their homes. Case managers can also help with food assistance, legal services, utility assistance, anything that the older adult needs to help reduce costs to be able to maintain their home longer. These improvements make the client safer, they help with age in place, and they also help with passing those homes down to the next generation. We know that this has, this type of work improves quality of life. Surveys have showed that we have reduced falls, improved mental and physical health, and increased interest, confidence, and ability to remain in their homes for years to come. We've also helped people to get out more. When you feel comfortable and confident with your home, you engage more, you invite people in more. So it's really helping with social isolation and things like that. We are deeply grateful to the city's support with capital funding. I'm not going to repeat the numbers because you just saw them. But we do have the problem with capital funding alone is not sufficient. Without adequate staffing on our side, appropriate operational support, we continue to be limited in the services that we can provide. And at this point, I'm going to pass it over to Bonnie Besser with Rebuilding Together
Good afternoon. Thank you again for inviting us here today and giving us the opportunity to talk about the HUBS program. My name is Bonnie Besser. I'm the Executive Director of Rebuilding Together Baltimore. We're a safe and healthy housing and community revitalization organization here in Baltimore and a founding partner of the HUBS program. As you've heard, the work that we do for older adults in Baltimore is really important and really impactful, but we face challenges in meeting the great and growing need in Baltimore City. Specifically, there have been challenges in accessing capital funding that's been made available through the city to, and allocated towards the HUBS program. Projects have been delayed due to slow estimate approvals and delays in permit application approvals. In the past, contractors had experienced long wait times for payments. And due to delays in scheduling permit inspections, permanent inspections failing due to cosmetic issues or work outside what had been the city-approved estimate, and delays in processing payments in general after invoices had been submitted. Recently, many of these payment issues have been resolved thanks to the hard work of DHCD and Civic Works staff. Unfortunately, the damage that has been done in relationship with contractors persists because they are no longer interested in working with the city because it took so long for them to get paid in the past. So that reduces our contractor pool and makes it harder for us to get services to homeowners, older adults, in an efficient manner. The permits process also has, and I know you guys spent three and a half hours in a hearing on Monday night about this, so I will not beat a dead horse around that, but the permits process has also eroded a lot of trust and willingness for contractors to work on cases that require permits and/or need to access city capital funding in order to get those projects done. Another pressing challenge facing the HUBS program is staffing capacity. You've heard what our waiting list is. The need in the city is, is great, and it is growing as our aging population is growing both in Baltimore as well as across the country. The need and the waiting list are currently far more than the capacity that we have to move cases through the process, to help an older adult homeowner do the applications that are needed, assess their homes, get contractor bids. All of that takes staff collecting those documents, compiling them, screening people for eligibility. And the staffing capacity to do all of those steps is currently limited. So that is why we have this long waitlist. Currently, the philanthropic funding that we have available for the HUBS collaborative, and this does not include city funding, is basically can support home repairs for 450 older adults a year. And we currently have a waiting list of almost 1,500 people, and that is growing and will continue to grow. Of those 1,470 people on the waiting list, although we wrote this last week, so the waiting list has probably grown in the last seven days. Almost 900 of those folks have completed the intake process and are ready to receive services. But again, we have to have the case managers and the construction leads and the contractors available to be able to get those repairs completed and to do it in a timely manner. We do have generous funding through the Weinberg Foundation and the Stolman Foundation, as well as other philanthropic foundations and through the city. But it really only covers 40% of our operating costs, the paying of the staff, the people who need to move this work along, coordinate it, make sure it's done well, make sure homeowners and older adults understand what to expect, what we can and can't do, all of those things. The staff is required to be able to facilitate that. And so in addition to more capital funding, which we've been very fortunate to already tap into and are very grateful to the city and to our philanthropic partners for that funding, we also need more operating funding to, to help hire and pay more staff and pay them at a competitive rate so that they can be, they can, their employers can retain them. You know, you heard about somebody who had worked with St. Ambrose, who there had been one case manager and then there had been another. This is a really hard job. We need to be able to pay people well so that we can, we can keep them and retain them and they can provide quality services. So thank you again for the opportunity to speak. I'm going to turn it over to Colin from the Green and Healthy Homes Initiative.
Thank you. No, before you do that, I just want to thank you personally because literally I see you out in the community providing this information at meetings. So again, it really makes a big difference that you really are on the ground doing this work, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you for your letter of support for Bernie.
Of course. And then also doing a note that we've been joined by Council President Zico, and appreciate you being here. Anything you want to add or you? All right, we'll go ahead and proceed. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Colin Choney, and I'm with Green and Healthy Homes Initiative. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and committee members, for allowing us to speak today. And also Commissioner Kennedy and her team, thank you guys for your ongoing support and partnership with not only this program, but the other programs that we work together throughout the city. Civic Works, with the support from the HUBS partners, has restructured the administration of the HUBS program to strengthen both external service delivery and internal operations. The program now operates on a cohort model, which allows for a more strategic and sustainable approach to case management. Clients are moved from the waitlist and assigned to a case manager at the beginning of each cohort, ensuring that case managers have a manageable caseload. This structure improves our ability to track services, coordinate repairs, and deliver meaningful outcomes for our seniors. Additionally, shifting to a tri-annual cohort model enables HUBS to better manage client flow, allocate resources more effectively, and maintain a higher standard of service. At our current pace of completing approximately 450 cases per year, it would take more than three years to serve everyone currently on our waitlist. In fact, clients who receive repairs in 2025 waited an average of 18 months from the time that they applied to the time that repairs were completed. These delays are not just numbers. They represent seniors waiting far too long for the essential repairs that support their health, safety, and independence. One of the questions asked in the resolution that led to this hearing was whether this aligned with best practices. It is not. We want to be able to serve our seniors faster, but we do not have the current capacity to do so. Without increased operational funding, our ability to deploy capital dollars effectively is significantly limited. We cannot reduce the growing backlog, nor can we expand to meet the overwhelming demand throughout the city. Investing and staffing is essential. More staff means shorter wait times, more homes repaired, and more older adults safely aging in place in the homes and neighborhoods they love. Thank you again. And I would like to pass this on to Ruth Ann Norton, President and CEO of Green and Healthy Homes Initiative.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Council President, good to see you. Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos, for the dedication to what we need to tackle for our seniors. You know, Hubert Humphrey said it was the moral test of government, how we care for our children, our most vulnerable children, and how we care for people like me in the twilight of their lives. I turned 65 a couple of weeks ago, so to see the criteria that 55 is an older adult just shook me a little bit this morning. But let me tell you that I'm very proud of the partnership of HUBS. I'm also very proud of the Department of Housing and Community Development and the work that I see that Nicole Hart and Brooke Paluzzi are putting into this with Commissioner Kennedy, to actually care for the people who should not be left to wait. They are the people who cared for us, who cared for our children, who taught in our schools, who helped to get us all here where we are today. And we owe a lot to making sure that we do allow people to live their lives out in dignity in their homes to create intergenerational wealth transfer. All of All of this work on what seems like simple home repair, which needs to get in earlier and more often, is an issue that GHHI works in, not only here, but we co-manage the Detroit Home Repair Fund and the work for seniors there with support from the Gilbert Foundation and others. With support from Robert Wood Johnson, we're working here and in Memphis around these same things. And there's many lessons to learn from each of these programs. And I'm just going to share some reflection about how do we equip the good people doing this work to my left and my right for the people behind us? And to utilize what I think is a pretty important strategy that the councilwoman is trying to put forth to bolster our Affordable Housing Trust, to make the dollars more readily available. But we need a real strategy around infrastructure. That infrastructure means how do we improve the timeframes for response from intake to completion of work? How are we pre-qualifying contractors upfront to ensure that they are trained to work in the homes of older adults? And now are we holding them accountable to timeframes? Some of that includes improving the permit process. Some of it includes ensuring that we give more money to the case management infrastructure that I think deserves a lot of support here. And we can't infinitely depend on the Weinberg Foundation to be the answer. We have to have a fundraising strategy to build out this infrastructure. We need to be talking to our hospitals across the country. In my written notes that may have been shared with you, I noted that our organization is working on a $50 million grant provided by the University of Pennsylvania Lancaster General Health in Lancaster, a city of 90,000 people, who invested $50 million to improve housing for their citizens. The Cleveland Clinic has put $50 million in to its citizens in Cleveland, and this is happening through Medicaid Managed Care throughout the country. Don't forget that the number one thing that is brought up at community health needs assessments for hospitals is housing, and often housing for older adults. The folks who are the grandparents that we need to ensure will be accessible to being able to see their grandchildren and feel that it's safe for their grandchildren to visit. One of our own clients, Corliss Phillips, a long-serving state employee working in the state's attorney's office, nearly lost her house because of simple home repair and the inability to afford it, and then couldn't have her grandchildren, who suffer from asthma, come visit because of the conditions of the home. So programs like this that improve that, change that, and change that for Corliss Phillips, meant that she can have her grandchildren visit, that she can stay in her home and build wealth for the next generation. But I do think we need a community advisory board on this. We need a strategy that includes how we build out the infrastructure. We need improved funding for the quality assurance and quality control process so we know what pricing is, we know what's happening and can happen. And we need to support HUBS and the city in building a healthy home repair program with priority for seniors that will allow triage to happen by need and improve the expediency in which we work. And we do have to, I heard earlier in testimony, expand how resources so we can expand on income eligibility. Retirement dollars don't go as far as we thought they would do that. If we do these things, we will attract more foundations to this work. We will be able to support Civic Works and Rebuilding Together and Manor Neighborhoods and all of the programs here. But there has to be a written coordinated strategy that is funded at all levels because it's the tentacles in community that are so critically important. We put an enormous burden on our city to answer all these questions. This is a great infrastructure that has started but needs money, needs a full tilt of support in going after healthcare dollars and going after even some of the utility fund dollars that can be dedicated to home repair, that need a reimagined look, how we look upstream in all of this. With funding cuts to healthcare, for example, it's more important that we do this work to save them the dollars down the road. As Commissioner Kennedy, sorry, my apologies, knows, we have worked on a number of these studies for CMS, for HUD. We helped to even get, believe it or not, out of this current Congress, out of this current House that is now on summer hiatus, we have tripled the budget for healthy housing that will be coming and available. Baltimore needs to be aggressive about this. Winning an award because of our philanthropic partnerships and winning awards doesn't solve the problems. It's great, but we need the daily infrastructure here. It will not take a lot to tip the scales on the human capital, but it is something the city council needs to work with the mayor and the city to do. So I will close this because I don't have, you've heard so much from others. We're here. GHHI will work with you. HUBS will work with you. But our goal is that we have got to collapse these timeframes because, look, if you're 70 or 75, 18 months is a whole lot longer than if you're 25. And we should not allow people to live in these conditions, and we have to pay attention to lots of it, including the increasing impact of extreme heat in our older housing. There are many ways to pull in the dollars on this, but I will say that HUBS has really pushed forward something that needs a lot of support, and we appreciate every good idea to do that. So thank you.
No, thank you very much just for being so comprehensive, but also making a link between healthcare, and also talking about the financial challenges and how we could be more creative as a city and some of our partners here in our city. So as we had these conversations and movement forward, that is very helpful. So again, really appreciate the work that all of the partners are doing, but particularly what you just lifted up today, because it gives us a roadmap in terms of what could be possible if we really dedicate our efforts in Baltimore City towards this.
Yeah, and we need to remove those barriers that may keep the city from getting philanthropic dollars, but equally move money into these systems. The joint agreement here should be on standards, the standards of how we do things, the timeframes, the quality assurance. We set those standards. We can jointly fundraise and advance this work together. And we ought to be running tests continually, and I know we are, but how long does it take a family to get through this, right? We pain ourselves, right, in needing to increase that. But I think a good QAQC process and a very aggressive fundraising, because one of the things we will show also is the return on the investment is critically dignity, right, and health. But it is housing stability and the health of neighborhoods by investing in these houses. It is, we are doing a lot of work with Fannie Mae on the Detroit Home Repair Fund that Fannie Mae funds GHHI on. And what we are seeing here is of interest to entities like Fannie Mae, where we are improving the value of housing when we do this, right? When we upgrade the electrical system, we're doing that for the long run. It also benefits clients, climate, it also benefits health. But we need to be having, and we have lots of good universities in our midst here, to have that ongoing return on investment study happening that we can go to CMS and make the upstream case regardless of the administration. People are looking for that, and we need to be thinking in that. And I have to say, we are light years ahead from where Lauren said about the original way we had to do this and where we are, thankfully, on data, the data tracking and data work. But we're looking at the end of ARPA. We have to be thinking about that and have to be engaging big institutions in how they value our citizens.
Absolutely, and thank you. I know I'm going to have some questions along with other committee members, but want to defer first to the council president and then to the sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the sponsor, Ruth Ann. Thanks always for your great work in our city. To all the partners that are here, to DCD, to Ms. Andoria and the Office of Aging. First off, let me just say, appreciate everybody holding this hearing and engaging this difficult but important conversation around home repairs. I was, and then Councilwoman Ramos was too, I was just in, at the Volmer Center for Vice President Middleton's annual summit for older adults, and it was beautiful, it was joyful, it was lovely to see that many of our elders together in one space. And I will say, I think a lot of our older adults right now have a lot of fear and a lot of anxiety and a lot of concerns, and some of it is to do with what's going on nationally, but it also has to do with here in Baltimore. And we know we are an intergenerational city. I've said this many times, when I was a teacher, I saw so many grandparents that were not just having raised their own children, but raising their grandchildren and supporting and contributing, and there is something really beautiful about the intergenerational approach. I would strongly agree with Director Ruth Ann Norton that I think one of the areas that we need to strengthen, because I hear there is some capital able to be deployed, you know, we in the council, and I think my colleagues fought really hard to increase support for HUBS, for this program, and I know the commissioner has worked really hard to effectively deploy it. I do think now is the time for us to be thinking about a really strategic plan for our elders. I know in the past, the city has done aging in place plans, has done a number of plans, but it does feel like with the office being returned to its rightful status as a cabinet level office, now really is the time to take a comprehensive approach and to look at the intersectionality between housing and, as Ruth Ann always reminds us, healthcare and the safety of our elders, which any time any of us go out into any older adult building, we are going to hear about safety concerns. I really do think this is a moment where we need to braid the threads together. Like Ruth Ann said, it cannot just be philanthropy, it can't just be Weinberg, it can't just be us over here. And what's great about Baltimore is that there really is the commitment. Like, it is across the lines. It is in the philanthropic community, it's in our nonprofit partners, we have great partners in city government that care about older adults. But I would just, and would love to hear maybe the director of the Office of Aging and maybe the housing commissioner, a response on, it feels like now is a moment for Baltimore to have a strategic plan that centers the voices of elders and that really connects many of the agencies and opportunities like HUBS, like housing repairs, to just have a really comprehensive approach. Yes, please.
Okay, so, as I've said before, I am working on a plan. That involves city government, partners, as well as state, because we're not just a city, the city government doesn't run everything. I just want to piggyback off of what the executive director said. We, by 2030, there'll be more older adults than children. So one of the things that I feel as though the council should do in helping me is to start to look at the fact that you have an aging city. It'll be increasing, okay, because I can write a plan, and I have to bring everybody to the table, but you also need to be able to back that up with funding. Because on paper, and I'll be honest, and I've said this before, and I'll keep saying it, there are many plans that have been written that are sitting dusty on a shelf.
Right.
Okay? If you want me to produce a plan, then when that plan is produced, make sure, in order to make Baltimore City an age-friendly city, that you back it up with funding. That is what will make an age-friendly city. Because words on paper, and I've worked for 15 million years, probably longer than most people that are sitting in this room, and I've seen plans come and go and just sit and collect dust. I want to say that, A, I'm willing to do that and commit to that, but also you have to commit the funding to that. You have pieces and parts right now that are actually a part of an age-friendly city. And some of the work that I do, for an example, I'm working with OEM. We're doing an older adult emergency preparedness. That includes not just the packaging of what the fire department does, that's going to include health, because a part of emergency preparedness, if we had a major emergency in the city, would also have an impact on older adults' health. So there's pieces and parts that we already do, but what's most important, which is what we had at this hearing today, was to, I keep going back to say, you've got to keep educating people, and you can't stop doing that. And so part of what goes in that plan is exactly what we sit here today and talked about, about looking at educating and the process of how an older adult can apply and move through the process to get the help that they need. So, Council President, I'm not ignoring what you're saying. You've said this a couple of times. And I'm a proven winner, okay? Everybody I've ever worked for, I mean, you know, you can go to the Secretary of Transportation, Paul Ritabell, okay? I've produced something that got us through some funding in an emergency. So I can do that, but I also need to know that, A, if I take, if we do this, we've got to be partners, and you've got to be able to figure out how you're going to fund the things. But we have to create a overall agency, and everybody sits at the table and they contribute their part. Because I can do the framework, but I'm not an expert at what happens in housing. The people behind me are. I'm not an expert at DPW. So everybody has to sit at the table and bring their piece in part and make the commitment that they are going to do that. I have some ideas that I would like to share with you after this in helping move and improve some of the processes that we talked about today, but I'm committed.
No, I appreciate that, Director Harmon, and I know you are, and I concur with your point that we've had plans, they've sat on shelves, and so I do agree with you that this really does need to be your office leading and the mayor and the city council supporting. And I will say, that is fortunately the partnership that we have. When we created the bill and you were around for it, Vice President and I, and city administrator and the mayor, we were all in together. And so I do think that, you know, with my colleagues as well, I do know there is that level of partnership and commitment. And I would say, you mentioned the state, I also think the federal government has a role to play, I think our philanthropic, I think it's going to be all of us. I will just say that I hear a lot when I'm engaged with particularly our philanthropic partners of like, we really want the city to plant a flag and lead and take the lead and convene and pull everyone together. And so, you know, the urgency for me is any time I'm in an older adult building, any time I'm in any of our senior housing or out today at the Volmer Center, I hear it again and again and again, and I think... And I think it, now is the time. And so, you know, you got that commitment from me. I would assume, because she's not here, I'm not going to say it, but I know Vice President Middleton has been championing this as well, and many of my colleagues also. And again, I know, you know, the purpose of this hearing is specific to the home repairs, so I don't want to overly derail it, but I do really think having a comprehensive framework, having a strategy, having an approach is critically important. And again, I appreciate it, I really appreciate the sponsor bringing this, and thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Director Harmon. Councilmember Ramos, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. President, as well, and colleagues. I've got several questions, are we doing two? Okay. Thanks. I, for, I want to again thank you all for taking the time for preparing for today and for really taking a, you know, taking this opportunity to reflect as we reflect every time we come into this hearing room about what needs to be done for our city. And that we want to just, you know, and I appreciate that, you know, several things have been brought up that are obstacles and things we need to work on. So those are the things that I think we should concentrate on and work on together. I have a couple of questions on the backlog. So the ORS has a backlog of, what was it, 1,400? And the HUBS program document talked about 1,470. Are those separate? Are there repeats? Do we know? Those are completely separate lists?
Yeah, those are separate.
So the backlog is actually over 2,500 families and older adults?
Yeah, and their backlog includes 55 and older and our backlog includes 65 and older. So it's a little different. No, that's what they've been working to make sure of.
I know the Commissioner said that you were trying to make sure that there were two separate lists, I just wanted to make sure we were working from the same numbers. So the two separate lists, we are not seeing any?
And we had to shut down our waitlist in November, so we have taken no more since November, which has then created those people going to the DHCD or the ORS waitlist.
And could you let me know why the waitlist was closed?
The waitlist was closed because we have the capacity to do 450 people a year and we realized it would take us three years to get to the current waitlist people. And it was not...
The energy needed to add more people to the waitlist takes away from the energy needed to provide services.
Got it, okay. Yeah, no, I'm, it's, yeah, well, it's obviously clear that there's some work to be done. You've made it very clear that operating dollars were going to be super helpful to try to address it. And I'm curious, both at light and, or excuse me, ORS, I'm trying to get it right, ORS and HUBS, that the operating dollars to just get the money out the door to, you know, our older adult population is very special and it does take additional significant effort because there's a distrust factor, right? I mean, they only trust certain people, so, you know, they're not going to give their information to just anybody, it is difficult. And they have every right to be, you know, fearful and not trustworthy, not trusting people because of, you know, the scams that are out there. So I totally get it. But, so I guess for both ORS and also for HUBS, what is it that you need? I mean, money, yes, I need to know how much, I need to know how many positions, I need to know those things to be able to help advocate, to figure out what exactly is happening. So Brooke, you want to take that first?
Yeah, Councilwoman, if I may, I just wanted to go back to the waitlist in general and some clarification around the numbers on DHCD's side of things.
Great.
The 1,400 number is in the light side of the waitlist. Those are clients that have not been fully screened as eligible at this point. The fully screened as eligible for ORS is, as of the time of this, of preparation for this meeting was 101 clients. So those are in line for services and are true ORS waitlist. So the light waitlist and the HUBS waitlist, not to contradict Ms. Avarela, but there could be some overlap between their waitlist and our waitlist as the application itself is separate pathways. It's on our priority as far as our data cleanup because we do have this data agreement, you know, with the HUBS program to review those parallel waitlists and coordinate as to which program would be able to serve those clients soonest.
Okay, so, we need a number here. So if I understand correctly, the 1,000 folks are those that are waiting to have all of their applications filling out, getting all the information, to then go into whatever program they're going to need to be able to help them, right? So that's at the intake side, there is that bottleneck.
Yes, and I believe they're in various stages.
No.
No, forgive me.
Yeah. And then the, Lauren, is the, the waitlist, that's the same in terms of people trying to get through the initial intake process? Or your folks are those actually waiting for services?
So I was looking in here, Bonnie, you repeated those numbers.
Um, yeah, so what we're looking at right now is, one, a funding gap in the operating dollars to be able to hire and pay enough staff, okay? And then the other is kind of balancing that with the capital funding that's needed to address the need. You know, I could sit here and say $30 million to you, but the staffing that would be needed to move $30 million in the next year would be a lot. So let's say $4 million, that that's a number that we've been noodling with for the next year, we would be able to close the funding gap needed for the current case managers and other staff, and we would be able to assist at least an additional 120 homeowners at an average of 25,000 per home. Obviously, there's more than 120 homeowners on the waiting list. So it's, some of this is economies of scale and how quickly can we ramp up to be clearing this waiting list. So the more capital dollars we add, the more operating dollars we're going to have to add to have the staff to move that through. So that's a modest number, but it's, it gives you an idea of the proportions of what's needed.
Yep. So I very much appreciate that and I agree that we need, as a former nonprofit director myself, you can't deploy capital unless you have the people that are actually going to work through it.
And that's just for a year, you know, I mean, we need, what we need to do is do these numbers for the next 10, 15, 20 years. That's what we really need to be coming up with, but...
I just need to get to this number and maybe we need to get...
Yeah, Councilwoman Ramos, I have the number now. So there are 14 and 70 individuals on the waitlist, 889 of those have been through intake. So they are ready to be assigned to a case manager, we just don't have the case manager capacity to assign them. The rest of them are still need to go through the pre-screening and the intake process.
Okay, so that's another 600 or so?
Yep.
That still need to go through the intake process, they're in the, so then in addition...
And we have one staff person working on all of that.
Right, well, there you go.
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Okay, I'm going to do the math here for a second while I pass it off to one of my, to Mr. Chair and then I'll come back next round, thank you.
Yes, Vice Chair Parker, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you for everybody who's here with us today, working on this. I've had the privilege of sending both of my roles pastor and now the city council, sending a number of folks through HUBS and know what a difference it makes in the lives of communities. Grateful to Banner Neighborhoods and Civic Works and the other, and Green Healthy Homes, the other on-the-ground partners who are helping take care of our folks. In looking at the questions asked, question two, and I really appreciate both the written and then the presentation form, the amount of funding that was allocated from ARPA and other city sources operating in capital, I really appreciate the data on how much of that was deployed. I know part of what we're doing here is we're talking about the operational funding and staff needed to deploy capital dollars and the back and forth. Obviously, ARPA was a huge influx of capital dollars. What's the, and again, you mentioned economies of scale, but is there a, it takes this many operational dollars to deploy this many capital dollars? Is there some range there that can help us think about what the balance looks like?
Like a proportion?
Yeah, exactly. Like, it takes, it takes one operational dollar to deploy that.
In an ideal world, we'd be looking at, I mean, at least 30% of the capital needed to, in operating, that's an ideal world. And that, and again, I'm giving you this off the top of my head, but it's, you know, there's a lot of grants that only allow for 10, 12, 15% operating. And so nonprofits are literally scraping, looking in the couch cushions to find the rest to pay for staff. But, you know, I would, again, off the top of my head and my colleagues here might disagree with me, I would say at least 30% of whatever the capital is to be able to pay staff to deliver the services.
Thank you. Ruth Ann, you had a thought on what the ratio?
So I imagine, so I can see this as an ARPA self-conceivable, right? Home Repair Fund, right? And looking at this. But I think what you should get from us, and I think what we can do, is map out, map this out at the different levels of growth and be able to look at the difference between what is overhead cost and what is actually direct service, right? Those case managers are direct service. They should be on a direct service line of what we need and then what does that effectuate and how many more people can get served? Because it's not, we have to get that, when I said early, we have to, you should get back from us, right? A proposal that shows in this infrastructure, it, with the case management growth to get more tentacles and more speed and efficiency in the system, you've got to also say, what is the quality assurance and quality control around turnaround time? And do we have the capital to meet the demand, meaning the actual work in the homes, right? That's the biggest cost is going to go there. It's the most important thing that has to happen. I think we can get you back, not in the day-to-day leadership that Colin and Lauren and Bonnie are, so apologizing to my friends if I'm stepping a little bit here, but the reality is we should be able to put together, like we do, an asset and gap analysis to be able to give that answer back in clear form of what does 4 million look like, what does 8 million, what is 12? But I think Bonnie also makes a point that we have to look at, like, I think, three to five years out because we would have to reassess a market. And if we're good at it, we would want, you know, a 10-year look is a longer look than you should want at this point. But I do think we shouldn't do, if we make the right moves here, it has to cover at least the first three years of this. So that's the number we should be looking at, not just a number that might get us through a year because there'll be a cliff that we will fall off of, right? We are building a stronger infrastructure and I think we can turn that around pretty readily, mapping out what those costs are in this market. To do that, both from a geography standpoint and as we build the efficiency of that intake in case management, we should be able to put more capital in the home, right? Because as you build that infrastructure out, the cost per unit of handling those cases will go down effectively and we can address more of what we need to in the home.
I really appreciate your points, the, both your points to the dynamism of the situation as well as that, so there's some efficiency to be gained at scale, but also as we, as we fine tune processes and get more effective there. Obviously, anytime we're talking construction, we're also dealing with, you know, the construction costs versus case manager costs may not be operating on the same inflationary, you know, path, right? And so those are relevant too. With the answer to question two...
Especially with tariffs, right? Construction costs are going to go up with tariffs.
Yeah, all right, right, exactly. With the answer to question two, back to that broader thing about the amount of funding that was allocated over this period of time, a lot of big numbers out there, which I'm glad it was such a priority for the administration to do that. Given that we've talked a little bit about the operational challenges on the staffing side of deploying funds, how effective have we been? I know this, how much was allocated to it, and maybe it's embedded in here, but I was trying to sort through it, I'm not sure that I got it clearly or that I understood it clearly, which is on my side, not on anyone else's. Have we deployed all of those funds that we allocated? Or is there like, has there been a backlog kind of capital funds that are sitting there that we weren't able to allocate as quickly as possible because we didn't have the people to do that work? Is, yeah?
I think there's two different, there's two different programs, so two different answers to the question. You know, we went through, and I think Brooke and the team have done a restructuring on our side, and we're starting to move cases faster. So we do have funds that are actively being deployed, but those are also encumbered already to cases. So, you know, it's been moving and now they're encumbered on the case and then work is coming in and moving those forward from our rehab techs. We're set up different, we're set up differently than our HUBS partners in that we have the light intake and assessment unit to help with the social service coordination and application and kind of that piece of it. And then it gets handed off to the rehab techs and, you know, the construction supervisor, et cetera, to help with the scoping, contractor, management with the homeowner, because those are not city contractors, these are contractors from wherever. We constantly are getting new ones to come into the pipe to like, want to do work. But then it's also managing that relationship between the homeowner and the contractor and moving that forward. So we're set up a little bit differently in terms of actually, I think, having a little bit more operational capacity on the city side than the HUBS partner side.
I really appreciate it, thank you, Commissioner Kennedy. So I hear a lot of confidence that the funds that are there are moving through effectively and will be spent as intended. And on the HUBS side, same question in terms of kind of the glut of funds, or not glut, but the significant amount of capital funds that came through, have we been able to process that or no?
So currently, each case manager is able to do between 75 and 100 houses a year. I do think that the increased capacity has to happen on the intake side as well as the case management side. And so I was trying to like, put, if you would have asked me this question 10 years ago, a home repair, an average home repair would have been $10,000. Right now, an average home repair is anywhere between 20 and $40,000 for the same repair we would have gotten 10 years ago. And so I'm trying to calculate these numbers, but understanding the cost of home repairs and inflation right now, it's very hard to like, track that. And so looking at, again, so between 75 and 100 cases, because we have six case managers, we can do 450 a year. Those numbers are based off of $10,000 per house in our capital funding. We are not doing what we can, we just got a $44,000 roof repair estimate. That would have been unheard of three years ago, and it's a row home. And so I'm trying to answer your question in the best way possible, but as these, the tariffs and the increase of the home repairs, it's really going to be hard to match the capital to the operational. So in my mind, we at least need to increase the intake process. So, Ms. Cece, I think, is not here anymore, but someone should never have to wait three months for a callback. That is absolutely ridiculous. It's irresponsible, it is not something that we want to do, but it's all we have the capacity for. The same is having over, almost 900 people just waiting for a case manager is also just irresponsible and not, not okay. And I am not answering your question appropriately, but I'm saying it to say that because of the cost of home repairs, that that answer is very subjective, but we have to increase intake and we have to increase case management. But we have to increase intake and we have to increase case management to match the capital dollars that we already have.
I was going to say, thank you for the question, which elicits some very sober responses, so please, go ahead. My microphone? Oh, you can use, you can use.
I can't get it to work. I'm, I'm an idiot. But a technical, technology, really. I do think one of the things as we think about how we scale these dollars is that, number one, on behalf of my fellow elderly folks here, as we're going to define us, we are actually more technically capable and we ought to have more technology in the intake side. And I think if we can make sure that hubs and the city have really good technology assisting on the intake side and that there is some uniformity here. Because if I'm a client, right, I'm going to be calling Nicole Hart every day. If I have a question, if I don't know which program I'm going to, how that's getting triaged, I call her every day anyhow. So we'll make that seven times a day. So I think as we all plan on this together, we have to use much more technology in that intake side along with our human capital. There needs to be an investment for that. And we need to triage between these two lists. Seniors don't care which list they're on. They care about the services they're going to get. And we've got to solve that as a collective upfront of how people come in. I think Lauren, so aptly, you know, quoted the no wrong door. But people are coming into what they see as a system for response. These are two amazing partnerships together. That is a unifying thing, Councilwoman, as you think about all of this, that I think is an opportunity. Certainly an opportunity for us at the hub side, an opportunity for the city. But that we are able to make sure that the one thing is when a, when a senior citizen comes in or an older person comes into the system, that they know where they're going to go and they're not, I can't tell you how many calls we get thinking we're the city, right? So we need to be much clearer on that and how we do that entry point. I think there's a lot of goodness here and Lauren's very apt to say we've got to have an investment on the intake side for sure.
And thank you for mentioning technology, which also coincides with what the commissioner was mentioning before in terms of data. So data and technology are very important. Before going back to the sponsor, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I just want to bring up that technology point is, is really critical. I think sometimes we underestimate our, you know, older adults and community and their willingness to adapt. And I think if intake can be increased through the use of technology, it's worth looking into. If it's going to give people the access that they're looking for and a timely response. Because I will say, I, while I applaud you all for making the attempt of meeting people where they are, right? By not making it too technologically complicated. But I think if we have a dual track, people will be willing to use it or at least have that option for folks. Because there's also additional partners out here who can aid and assist them through an internet or, or, you know, computer process if it's going to help them get, get through. Because I think getting people a timely response is key to all of this work that we don't want to lose sight of. Because a lot of the repairs that we're talking about are emergency repairs. Like, and these are people who are coming because they don't have 18 months to wait. It's, you know, equivalent to someone calling 911 and needing an ambulance and says, we'll be here tomorrow. At some point, the system isn't working if it's going to take that long for someone to get the help that they're looking for. And I think in order for it to work properly, we have to make sure that happens. So if it's the figuring out how do we get additional staff or support side funding, then that is important and that's key. Then we can definitely look into that. I love the idea of coming back and saying what you actually need. Because I do recognize the challenges in looking at nonprofits and seeing when you get these nonprofit dollars, they're only going to pay for so much support services. So I will say, as a city, we may want to look at how can we support these organizations from the personnel side? If the capital dollars are a lot easier for them to get. Because I see a lot of capital support coming from the city as well. But maybe those dollars will be more useful if they're flexible and allow us the ability to lean more heavily into the support side. If they're able to get capital dollars from elsewhere, if that's easier to get access to. It would be something to think of. But just kind of my question, while we're working on the personnel side and getting additional funding for that, I think there is an opportunity to address the, like, the, the payment side. Just making sure contractors are paid on time and quickly so they can also want to work for the, for the city and want to do work in these programs. And also, who are these contractors? I was wondering, if someone could kind of explain, like, what does that payment side look like? What has the hiccups been? And what does your pre-qualification process looks like? So we can talk about how do we increase our pool of contractors as well.
Colin to chime in here, but these guys might. But let me say one thing that I think as we evolve hubs and as we evolve the joint work, I think there's an ability, it may, and everybody should just bear with me on this, but there is an ability to run the consortium with a unified payment system, right? So bill.com is a platform, for example, to ensure that there is timely payment across all of the contractors. I think people get paid, right? And I know we work on this platform. But there's got to be, I, I really believe that as we scale, the uniformity of the qualifications for the contractors, the training for the contractors, make sure they know how to work with older adults. They understand the health impacts and other social, social impacts here. But there needs, there's the uniformity of agreement of how they get paid. Because as a contractor, I'm not doing anything if I have to wait six months to get paid on a 1Z, 2Z, 3Z, right? So really successful programs look at pre-qualification and know that contractors will get a certain, at least a certain flow. I think that's probably happening in many of these entities. But I, I think there is, right, as, as we look at joint investment to do this. Number one, loved your comment about let's, let's make sure we get that infrastructure, the people funded. And that may take the government side so the capital money can be raised easier, right? Some entity, whether it's, you know, a local hospital or others, they really want the money that's going to fix the problem, right? But I think this uniformity of how we look at an intake system and uniformity of how we pay contractors, there's lots of things around that QAQC and standards that working together, I think we can continue to refine in ways that improve that efficiency, right? And as Bonnie or Laura said, there should not be an 18-month delay for anybody and we can get there. It, it does take capital investment here. Where we put the capital is important.
Yeah, I would just like to jump in and I can't see Ms. Paluzzi, but she may want to jump in. Hi. So with the addition of Ms. Paluzzi on that side, who, as I say, came from, she managed the hubs program for a while, so she understands both sides of the program. I would say in the last three to six months, we have changed how payments are happening. We have gone back and found all of the payment problems. And we're doing, we're doing well at this point.
We're doing a lot better. I would, I would categorize it as well. I acknowledge that there were challenges previously with moving some invoices through in a timely manner. But any of the bumps that we've experienced have, we've gotten over that hump. We now have those monthly meetings, shared spreadsheets to ensure that there are not delays. I will say there are probably, there are a handful of more complex invoices that we're going back maybe cross a fiscal year that are taking a little bit longer. But with Ms. Kristen Mahler as well too, who I think is here, one of the hubs administrators now, we have a good plan in place for getting over those humps. I know there are still some criticism around some of the existing timelines or previous timelines and bumps having made other contractors disinterested. We have contractors coming and out on the city side all the time who work through, who know our regulations and the timeline. And we're trying to work individually with anybody who has ongoing concerns to navigate those together. And maybe assage any fears that may remain. And I think, I think that we, at this time, I don't believe there are any more than probably about 10 or 15 outstanding invoices that will get through very shortly.
No, thank, thank you for that. I just wanted to ensure that there was no hiccups from the city side because I've heard some stories.
There were years where there were hiccups on both sides. And we finally have a system together. And I would say that that is something that is, is going much better right now.
And, and, and thank you for asking the question around payment. It also dovetailed to one of the questions I had, which was around the relationships with contractors. And obviously, payment is a significant piece of retaining those contractors and even expanding. So thank you for, for raising that. I know we are getting a little short on time. It looks like it is 2:05 PM. But I do want to go right back to our sponsor who may have some additional questions and comments. I'm sure she has additional questions and comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks to my colleagues for, for great questions and for everybody to answer them. I just wanted one clarification on the backlog. The written testimony from the, from DHCD says that there are 1,425 older adult clients on the light side that are waiting for, for, to, to go through the intake process and 101 clients who have been offered services in our waiting. So that's opposite of what Ms. Paluzzi, I think I heard. I could be wrong. I just wanted to clarify. Your written, this is your written report to us.
That is correct. And that's when, when she just, when she spoke previously, she did correct that. So yes, it is 1,425 on the light side that have not been addressed. One of the things that the commissioner highlighted is that we're bringing on additional social service coordinators. And we're bringing in additional office support specialists to be able to work through that, that 1,425 better, faster, improve customer service and down the road. And what we also, we're recruiting for, in the process of recruiting for the social service coordinator supervisor, which will also help be a traffic cop, get over these humps and improve the customer service to the older adults.
Just really quickly, I'm sorry, just really quickly, how many service coordinators are you looking to hire? Because I was one of the questions I did have.
If, let me go back to the org chart. So when, if you have a copy of the presentation, on the ARC org chart, oh my God, it's so small, I can't see it. But I believe it's, it's six or seven, so it's six or seven. Oh, I did put the notes. So in total, it's six social service coordinators and then the social service coordinator supervisor on that team. And then there will be a total of seven office support specialists for the customer service team.
Thank you.
So that's 13 total that you're looking to hire? Six plus seven?
No.
Okay.
Three, so it's, no, it's eight, including the supervisor.
Okay, so the social services deport are the same folks as the office, as the coordinators?
So the office support specialists are the people who are answering the phone. And they're also, they're answering the phone and they're also doing the process of payments. So it's like, kind of like a front office, back office. And so customer service, not only to the older adults, but customer service to the contractors as well. Or anybody that's calling in reference to a payment. And then the actual social service coordinator is the one that will be managing that list of that 1,425. And so it does go by priority level because that 1,425, some people may jump the, you know, jump up faster because there is an urgent need for some reason. So we still also have those things that come into play. But that's what that social service coordinator supervisor will do is manage that list and ensure that that team of six social service coordinators are accurately getting those applications through the system.
Okay, so the hiring is on the social services coordinator side?
So it's all through. So it's, it's the Director of Administration who leads the customer service team that's actively in recruitment now. And then we are in recruitment for three office support specialists. So that's the customer service side. And then on Director Manago's team for light intake, there's the social service coordinator supervisor that's in recruitment with additional of, four vacancies for social service coordinators.
Okay, well, so you've recognized, I mean, I think the point is that you, you, the DHCD has recognized that part of the reason there's such a backlog is that you need to have that upfront.
Absolutely.
Support. And, and I know that in the budget that you had gotten a lot more dollars and that's part of what's funding that piece. Because I had actually wondered what the, because we had also asked you all for the, for the crisis services team, who I love, by the way. And so, so, so that is good that DHCD had recognized that that need was there. And it sounds like HUBS is also recognizing that that need is there on their side. And so we have to be able to make sure that, that both are supported or somehow working together. And, and making sure that this, that the, the folks are getting what they are supposed to be getting. So I think that we need to be advocates for HUBS also to make sure that they're getting the support that they need. Because they have one intake person and six social service supports, if we're talking in the same language. And it's not always getting there. So I want to ask your support to support them in making sure that that, those dollars get to where they, where they need so that we can deploy all these dollars.
We, so I just, I want to commend Deputy Hart and her team because a lot of it wasn't necessarily new money. It was reorganizing and doing like a total kind of revisioning and reorganization.
I know you've been working hard on that throughout the agency, yeah.
Of the division, of her division to like create the efficiencies and figure out how to fund the different positions and move things around and, and do that. So I do want to commend her on that because it has kind of better aligned that intake and customer service spot. We, 100%, we've had this, these conversations with Lauren and, and the team in terms of looking at how to support on the operations side. I assisted personally in, in trying to unlock some grant funds last year. Was that last year? Last year? Yep. So we unlocked some grant funds for them for operating. Is it enough? No. Is it from us? No. But we played a role in advocating for it and explaining why the need was there to, you know, kind of help push that philanthropic partner, you know, to look at the application, take it seriously and have a better understanding of what the need was and why it was so important.
Well, I think, you know, we're asking these hubs partners to play this role. I think we need to play a larger role as a city to be able to support, get the support that they need. Their, their philanthropic is only what, 40% of the, of the budget? So we can, we can talk about that further, but I, I'm pretty, we need, we need to do this. We need to figure this out. The other question I had, I have a couple more. The commissioner, we've talked a lot about the whole block strategy and about, you know, there are several whole blocks that are identified. And that part of the strategy isn't just about rehabbing those vacant properties, but making sure that the older adults that are on those blocks are getting the home repair that they need. They may not be on this waitlist. And so how's that, how's that happening? Are you, with the 308 or 10, whatever it is, blocks that are currently identified for this year, looking at who needs that and are they going in the front of the list? Are you dedicating certain staff to that list? Are they going to ORS? Are they going to HUBS? What's the?
There, I'll start, but so there's been kind of synergy and crosswalks done in terms of what is currently on the entire universe of, of the HHP list, where that overlaps with priority blocks, whether or not this last fiscal year or this fiscal year. basically priority blocks, as well as the impact investment areas as a whole. We've utilized some other funding sources other than just, you know, we don't typically jump into the HUBS funding line for those cases. We've also had some impact investment area funding that we've, you know, moved to help support that work. We did include, so this is part of the mayor's capital strategy. $3 billion 15-year capital strategy does include a line item, a column on the master large matrix for home repair, specific to the geographies of focus and looking at those properties that would be over, you know, where someone has lived in the property for longer than 15 years to kind of help gauge the older adult. That number just alone on the capital side is over $400 million. Several years ago, we did some analysis in the agency to look at what we thought was need for home repair across the city, not from a necessarily age space, but just home repair space from dates and times of, that showed dates of deed transfer and length of deed transfer. And at that time, we were estimating the repairs cost, capital cost, to be over $625 million across the city. And we completed that analysis now probably three and a half years ago. So if you take in consideration the inflation and the cost of repairs that we've seen, we know that, you know, entirely across the city, not just in the vacant reduction areas, that we're probably pushing, you know, the $900 million need entirely. So we do deploy, we prioritize. There's been work that the team has done on a couple of the blocks already with home repair. They make, you know, outreach efforts to the homeowners, you know, to offer different levels of service. We also have been partnering with our agencies that aren't necessarily part of HUBS. And some of those agencies are also, and nonprofit partners are getting home repair dollars through other sources and deploying those in the geographies of focus as well.
Are you tracking that separately than this number? Can we see that as part, and maybe you're already doing it through the BBRC?
We, we aren't tracking the partner dollars.
Not the partner dollars, but the, you know?
In the, we do, and are tracking, I mean, that's part of what we consider a whole block outcome.
Of the 308 blocks this year, or 10, whatever the number is today, what the, what those numbers look like so that we can either, and I get that, you know, there's dollars going to some of our partners, they're the ones deploying those and getting the home repair. But if they're coming through us, or coming through, you know, which ones are coming through us? Are they, are they moving to the front of the list? Are they, you know, I'm just trying to get a sense of, because they could already be part of the list, so they need to be taken out? Or they could be, you know, because we've said that this was a very critical part of the, of the strategy.
It is. And depending upon where we are in the whole block outcome, it also is like helping to gauge the part of the home repair timing and different things. Like, we have one in Penn North now where that home repair is actually the first, like, big home repair effort. And the development will be coming later. And then in other ones, the development is occurring and the home repair is following. So it's also on a timing component.
Well, I do want to understand this better, and I'll make that as a request that we'll do a follow-up on that. I'm looking at the capital budget, this is something separate. That, this is Q3 expenditures with very small type on a very large spreadsheet. And the, I'm just trying to understand, in the capital budget that I have been able to find in this very large spreadsheet with very small type, one, two, three line items that say, that are related to home repair. So I have the project number if that matters. There's one that says housing upgrades to benefit seniors, which was, uh, looks like $800,000 has already been expended. I have housing repair assistance, $3 million. I don't see any expenditure. And then, this is capital. I have housing repair assistance, $1.5 million, and there's no deployment of dollars. And I can share with you the project numbers so that we can see like what the, what the issue is.
If you can share the specific PRJ numbers with us, because as you know, there's been a significant effort.
To consolidate, yeah.
To clean up and consolidate and what numbers actually have cash associated with it to spend and where that is, and if it's just appropriation. So it would be helpful for us to get the numbers, the PRJs that you're looking at so that we can compare those with the ones that we actually utilize.
And for clarity, we can make that, we can make that committee request and have it sent over so we make sure we're all on the same page.
And then the Affordable Housing Trust Fund dollars for this work is from the capital side? So it's what the?
Both sides.
Is it because there, because we could, because, so the, just for the public's knowledge, there is roughly $6.5 million that gets put, of capital dollars that we borrow as a city that the voters allow us to borrow, goes into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund each year. And then there's a dedicated funding source, that my colleague was the sponsor of that funding source, that goes in, which is, which is, could be operating. It's very flexible funding, other than the restriction of the income. And so I'm just curious if the $4 million or $2.5 for the last couple of years that goes to the HUBS program, it sounds like it's been deployed as capital, but could have been operating.
It was deployed as capital. I think the key component is trying to figure out, and we've talked amongst the team here, and the team has had some suggested changes on how to deploy those funds to the partners moving forward. So we're still getting the final spend plan for this year. I think the key piece of that is just reporting on percentage. So if you're receiving X number, that staff cost and operating cost has to be specific to the time spent on those cases that are 50% and 30% below AMI.
Oh, I think that reporting could be.
You know, we would be doing that. But that is part of what we've been looking at moving forward because we have understood that, you know, operating is important and then trying to work on the line items and moving that money differently to the HUBS partners and potentially being able to pick up some operating.
Well, I think that was what the ARPA model was, right? The ARPA funding went in chunks that went to some of the partners, and they could use some of it for capital and some of it for operating.
No, it was all capital.
It was all capital, okay.
It was all capital.
But they were able to make sure that it got deployed.
And that's what the team is looking at for the, for the trust fund money. This is new to them over on our partners. But they're gonna look at, when we get the final amount, how to deploy that. And then looking at, you know, if we can put in some operating to, but ensuring that that operating is specific to those cases that are 50 and 30% below from a reporting standpoint.
Yeah, I mean, I think that can be done. It's, I can do it on my spreadsheet, but I'm sure there's a more technical way to do it. And, because I think that it, we designed the trust fund to be very flexible in that regard with the only stipulation around the 50 and 30%. I mean, otherwise it's flexible. And frankly, will probably be our lifeline if all this money goes away from Medicaid and from, from CDPG, frankly. So I'm, I don't, I mean, I think that that's the tough part in this regard. Because I do want to find more, I need to find another funding source for our HUBS partners. But I also want to have this discussion around, we don't have to have it now, but at some point, what, making sure that, you know, I think it makes sense to have HUBS partners because they're in the community, people know them. And we want to have as many places as possible where people can get intake and support. We just want to make sure that all that is supported. And, you know, I want to make sure that DHCD also helps with, with this operating side. Like, we've got to work together on this.
And thank you again for raising the point of Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Again, your advocacy prior to being on the council and us working together and then being on the council.
Lots of babies involved in the city, that's one of them.
It's great stuff, but also the need for flexibility as it relates to funds. I do want to be respectful of time because we're getting close to 2:30. But any final questions or directives as we begin to close out?
Mr. Chair, I want to thank you for giving us space for this conversation. I learned a lot today. I learn a lot every day. That's the best part of the job. But also, I think it's very, it highlights the need to continue this conversation. We need to get this list down. We need to get people the help that they need. And the need is going to be greater. So just because we're bringing the list down doesn't necessarily mean that people aren't going to be, there isn't going to be more need. So the communication, the coordination, and getting this down is going to be important. So I'm hopeful that we can have a follow-up hearing in a few months to sort of see where that list is, how we can have more conversation about this. It sounds like even though we passed the budget just recently, the operating dollars has to be deployed today. And so, or yesterday, actually. And so figuring out the best way to do that now rather than waiting for, is something that I'll speak with the mayor's office about. And so that we can figure out how, the best way to get them the dollars that they need. And it sounds like you're already thinking about it for this year's spending plan for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund as well, at least for the short term. But I do think this is a longer-term issue that we need to figure out. So I appreciate the opportunity.
No, we appreciate you. Again, this is, a conversation has to continue. So the point remains, and I thank, I'm thankful for, you know, our committee members, Vice Chair Parker, as you talk about getting folks through the system in the past and even in the present, right? You've seen it on the front lines. And then even Councilmember Jones, as we talk about the emergency conditions that folks are dealing with, right? The urgency of now, right? And so having that backlog is something that we need to, we need to work through expeditiously and have flexibility for funding, making sure that our contractors are being paid, that we're also encouraging folks to participate in the process, that folks aren't being discouraged as older adults who are going through this. And so again, all the partners here are important, our community partners, our city agencies. We appreciate the fact that we're hiring more folks to get this work done. It is very critical work. As we heard from our residents who have been dealing with these issues, we recognize it is so critically important. So again, thank you for sponsoring this. We will stand, rather than adjourning, stand in recess because again, this is a conversation that we would like to continue. We appreciate the mayor's office being here as well, Council President's office, like myself, the comptroller had representation here as well. So again, thank you. I know I learned a lot today, and there's still so much work that has to be done. So again, thank you all for taking the time and dedication to being here today, and we will stand in recess.